Would I like to call the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski? And Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have this close to seventy-two hours fire meeting at the City Hall in Cole Public Library and the right is also posted on the city website. The city welcomes public comments, but this time publicly addressed the city council. And I do not want to interfere with it. But for citizens, they all, the city council may not discuss the big question.
On any issues, on any issues not on the agenda. I'd like now ask City Clerk Baker to explain how a public comment might work for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for a public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item in. The comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone physically here wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone in the virtual world that would like to speak?
There are no requests for comments this time.
Thank you very much. Can we have the city manager's report, please?
Yes, Mr. Man-- oh, hello. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much this evening. We do have a relatively light agenda, which is nice because I have a little bit of a meaty report tonight, so I hope that you will bear with me as the presentation comes up. All right, very good. I have some good, bad, and ugly, essentially. No, it's good, 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 and just a little bit of bad at the very end. So let me start off with some of the very good, if I can get the clicker to work, which apparently I cannot. Can you go to the next slide, please? There we go. All right, so we start with the excellent good, and you will see that our very own Captain Jason Sutliffe is here in the back. Wave your head, wave your hand, Jason. Hi, Jason. Captain Sutliffe, as I think that you know, played an instrumental role in the investigation for the fire that unfortunately impacted the San Gabriel Mission. The fire itself was tragic, and there was quite a lot of destruction, but Jason was our lead investigator. He worked very closely with the San Gabriel Fire Department, and you may have seen, you may have seen some kudos that are well-deserved in the newspaper for his excellent work. So thank you so much to Captain Sutliffe for all of his work. I do have a couple of other items to get there, but I know Vice Mayor Jacobowski has been very interested in this issue and probably has some comments at the end. But on behalf of staff, certainly, thank you so much, Captain. We appreciate everything that you've done. All right. I also could take a break here if you want to deal with-- Go ahead.
Captain Sutliffe and I have had a few conversations. I find the topic of ours fascinating. The first time I went out with the Fire Department, we were investigating after a fire that was put out in South San Marino. So it was a real joy to read the early findings on May 5th, and yes, but it wasn't bad news about San Marino.
As the city manager said, the fire was tragic, but I'd like to just very briefly read exactly what was said. It was agreed, let's see, it was, I'm pulling out in the middle. It was that arrest that led to the investigation and to link Cory to the Mission Fire. Captain Jason Sutliffe of the San Marino Police Department said at the news conference Tuesday at the Mission. And here is our great pride. He will be arraigned, and Sutliffe, who is also the lead investigator of the Verdugo Fire Investigation Task Force. So we are so proud as a city and a special kudos. Thank you. And I know you've done a lot of work, too, during the pandemic, as have all of our wonderful crew from the Fire Department. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to continue if that's all right with you?
Please.
Excellent. All right, moving on to some very happy news. You wanted me to try again? Nope, please advance to the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about community services programming. You all asked for a report back on what we were doing instead of Fourth of July, and we also have some additional things to announce, so I'm here to give you that report. I am so very excited to tell you that we will be having our Memorial Day event this year, and it will be a live, in-person event at Lacy Park. It really is an event that touches my heart, is so special in San Marino. It was so sad to not have it last year, and we are so delighted to figure out a way to do it this year, following all of the protocols that are necessary. So it will be at Lacy Park on Memorial Day at 9:00 a.m. We will have our traditional event, recognition of veterans. We'll have guest speakers and, of course, some music. It is open to the public, and we will do another round of the Hometown Heroes Veteran Display, which we debuted last year at Veterans Day. We have a couple new takers, so there will be a couple of new flags, which we are delighted to have as an addition. So it is high time. We are very excited. I am looking very forward to seeing our veterans to come out and enjoy the special day with us, and I know that, I know that the five of you are, too. Also, just to follow up on an item from last council meeting, you asked for a shift in the aquatics program to see if we could get the school district to agree to lease us their pool now that the protocols have shifted a little bit, and I am delighted to report that they have agreed. So we are in the middle of executing an agreement to use the pool. Unfortunately, because of the late date, we won't be able to start the aquatics program in June as we normally do, but we do anticipate kicking it off in July. So we are delighted. The vendor will be coming aboard to take it, so we will be moving to the third-party vendor, as we had proposed to do last year in our strategic plan for community services, and we will be able to launch that program in July. So delighted to, delighted to be able to announce that. All right, next slide, please. Moving on to Fourth of July. As you know, the council did agree to continue the cancellation of that event this year in an abundant caution, and I reported back that we were already reporting on a slate of pop-up events for the week prior to Fourth of July. So this is just a little taste, a little sampling. All of the final details are being fleshed out, but this is what you can expect that week. As you will recall, Fourth of July weekend is actually a long weekend this year, with the holiday being observed officially legally on Monday, so we do anticipate people traveling. So we stayed away from the Friday, just in case people wanted to head out a little early. But we do have the pop-up events going on Monday, June 28th, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. You can scan through and see this. We'll be, we'll begin marketing all of this and communicating out to the community ASAP, but we're pretty excited. There's, there's a large variety of events for all ages and all parts of the community, and then, of course, it'll kick off on Monday, June 14th, where we start giving out these supplies for the decorating, which is something that we kicked off last year. So if you have any questions, all of these programs are being managed by our Acting Recreation Manager, Eddie Cobarubias, and he would be delighted to talk with you further about it. But appreciate your support and happy to share this information with you. Next slide, please. This is both the bad and the ugly. This is a bit of a sobering item, as I'm sure that you have heard in the news, cyber attacks continue to be on the rise. There have been many of our cities in the general LA County area who have been targeted by cyber attacks, as well as, of course, private sector. And we were highly disturbed to find out that just this morning, the San Gabriel Police Department was targeted in a cyber attack. They are down. There's an investigation going on right now. They're still trying to understand the extent of what happened, how it happened, and when they will be back up. So this is quite close to home in many ways. So I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you a little bit about what we are doing and what we are going to be doing to continue with cybersecurity. I want to start with some gratitude for the council. You've been very supportive in letting us move forward with a lot of security items related to IT. We are in a much better position than some of our neighboring cities are, and that is due to your support, and on behalf of all of the staff, I can only tell you how much we appreciate that. We are continuing to do all of the good practices that we've been doing. We have done all of the patches. As you may have heard, Microsoft had some very critical patches that needed to be done. We did them, we did them ASAP and had them taken care of. We have increased our filter setting to trap more emails that might even possibly be questionable. This, of course, is a huge inconvenience, because this means, and maybe the five of you are experiencing this as well, it means that more emails to the city will end up in the potential spam filter, which will require us to go in and check, but the trade-off is well worth it. So we have increased that filter a bit, at least for now. We're continuing to work with our antivirus software. We are sending out regular emails to staff about the danger of phishing emails, which is the way that most, most of these attacks are targeted. And, of course, we're continuing some of our security programs. Next slide, please. As a result of this, I've authorized a few things to happen immediately. The first thing is, of course, we're going to continue the scanning of anything that might be going on with our server. Intelisys One is always on top of those sorts of things, so they'll be continuing that. We've also decided to implement a phishing test. So at random, phishing emails will be sent to anyone with a City of San Marino email address, which does include the five of you, and we will be testing to see who clicks on the phishing link and who doesn't. So just a reminder that if you see an email that says, "I must speak with you urgently, please don't call me," it's probably not coming from me or anyone else on staff, or probably any of the five of you. So we are really going to try to beef up our practices on that, on that level. We also are doing another round of cybersecurity training. We've already had one round, we're going to do another. That'll be in the next, within the next month. There'll be a couple of different sessions. And I've authorized the implementation of a new dual-factor authorization system to ensure that people that are logging into the server actually belong there. In the next couple of days, I'm still considering some additional things to authorize with my city manager contingency, based on the threat level that we think is out there. We may be doing a Wi-Fi security patch. We have a couple of different Wi-fis that leave us potentially vulnerable, so we'll be looking into that. Protection for our mobile devices, as we have more and more phones, iPhones, and tablets and so forth rolled out, those do represent a vulnerability, and it does seem like that's the direction that these cyber attacks are moving in. And we may do even some enhanced cybersecurity monitoring, so that it's not just, you know, on a regular schedule, but rather 24/7. So I'll be looking at those. There are some bigger ticket items that might be coming down the pike as well, that are potentially being recommended by our IT provider. Those would all come to council. They are more significant in nature in, you know, terms of $20,000, $30,000 apiece, so you'll have a chance to consider those if we think that those are moves in the right direction. But again, I just want to close by thanking the council for your support as we make sure that our system is secure, that we don't lose any data, and that we're constantly able to provide service to our community. On that sobering note, I will conclude my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Do any council members have any questions or comments, please?
An update. Thank you for, and congratulations to Captain Sutliffe for the excellent work that you've done, and the city is very proud. So I wanted to acknowledge that, and that was included in your report. As to a question, we discussed right before this, the status of reinstituting or bringing back the pool program for city residents, families, and children at San Marino High School, and I think you had an update that you could give at this time.
Yes, I did mention that the program will be launched again as of July, and we appreciate the school districts working with us on that. Thank you. Sure.
Is there any other questions or comments from council? Vice Mayor, please.
Do you have some?
No, I do not.
Yes, I'm sure this cybersecurity issue concerns all of us, and I suspect in the coming days, even more is going to be revealed or not. If you find that we would benefit from even more security that would require the larger purchase, am I correct in presuming that we would possibly call a special meeting to approve those costs?
It's possible. We do have several meetings on the agenda for the next couple of weeks. The immediate things would all fall within my authorization level. The bigger things are not as pressing, so we should be able to fit them into our normal schedule.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, my pleasure.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Move on for the motion to waive further readings. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to move on to new business. Item number one, approval of a letter to support Measure E with the San Marino Unified School District Parcel Tax. Can we please have the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Udi. As I'm sure everybody is aware, the San Marino Unified School District is holding an election on June 29th for their Measure E, and they have requested that the city council provide a letter in support of the measure, and I'm happy to turn it over to council for discussion.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Dr. Wong?
No question, thank you.
Mr. Talt?
No.
Mrs. Shepherd-Romney?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No questions, thank you.
And I have no questions either. I'd like to open up for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, anyone in the virtual world?
We did receive one letter regarding this item from a Dr. Alfonso Nava, and he was voicing his objection to the letter of support, and that has been previously provided to both the city council and posted on the city website, if you'd like to read the full letter.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Do we have any comments on this? Mrs. Shepherd-Romney, do you have any comments on this?
Thank you. Sorry. Excuse me, Mayor. I will take this off. I cannot say how strongly I hope that this passes as a personal matter, and I am supportive of everything that the school board and the district is doing in order to get Measure E, and as well as the committee that is headed by a past school board member and a neighbor of mine, Nam Jack, who is doing an outstanding job to get this forward and moving forward in our community towards passage this time. An important change, I think, has been that this has a normal term associated with it, and it will not result in the increase of anybody's taxes at this time. It's a much more traditional approach that's been documented, similar to what they've done last year and in the many years in the past. So for all of those reasons, I'm very supportive personally for this. I do know that the request to have us issue a statement in regard to anything that the school district, in terms of whatever measure, this measure in particular, but anything in the future, may be problematic. For example, we weren't officially asked, I think, last time to stand for the prior measure that was on the ballot this last March, but I know that might have involved more, obviously, concern among community members and perhaps even council members. So this puts us in an awkward position in terms of, as a council stating, and I don't really know the history enough about it as to whether, I always thought, since being elected anyway, that we had not taken a stand on any of the measures, or any of the candidates, for that matter, that moved forward from San Marino Unified School District to be on the board, or some of their taxation, or whether it be a parcel tax or other measures. And I am concerned that bringing this to it, to us now, will mean that all future things will then, by request, by letter, be asked, asking council to take a similar position, and I think that becomes difficult. Not in this regard, but I don't know if we should do it, because I do not want to establish a precedent that city councils, ourselves or otherwise in the future, might have difficulty in agreeing on a unified stand, in which case I think it would look bad for the city to have a divided council on any of the issues, and therefore would be impacting. So those are my thoughts generally, but I'd like to hear from my other council members concerning their thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I support Measure E, so, I mean, I was on the committee last time, and I failed, so of course, I'm going to continue to support it. And if they ever come back to us later on for another measure or for any proposition, we'll let the future generation worry about it. Thank you.
Mr. Talt, do you have any thoughts on this?
I, too, also join the support of Measure E. In fact, I put out a sign today.
I'm getting mine tomorrow.
Yes, I, and I see nothing wrong with us, the way we're doing it. We're not passing a letter, we're not passing a resolution. And I understand the distinction between supporting individuals and supporting something so important, because we also find ways to financially support the schools through our transit money and other things. So I do believe this is reflect-- I know people have problems with the finances of the schools. However, I can support this, because I don't believe we should cut off our nose despite our face in this instance, so I can support this letter. And to those that have problems with school finances, they should find a way to directly deal with the school board, attend their meetings, and take action that way.
Thank you, Mr. Talt. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I similarly agree that our support is really vital at this time. The school district is really in a tough position. This does have a six-year sunset. I certainly agree that in going forward, we would look at every request to support on an individual basis. This is not a carte blanche, and we're in partnership. We live in the same community, so we really need to be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, too, support this. I think the schools are such an important part of the fabric of the community, and if this does not pass, the schools are already in a tough enough spot, and I think the city manager made an excellent point on a call the other day, that potential superintendent candidates are looking at this, and if this would not pass, we would not have the best candidate pool for fulfilling that position, so I, too, can support this.
I move to authorize submitting a letter in support of Measure E, which renews the San Marino Unified School District Parcel Tax.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two.
We sure, sure we don't want to take Stephen Wong's name off of this, since he had trouble last time.
Put him on the left bottom. Put him on the bottom.
Motion-- Motion passed already.
The discussion of the film permit process, you know, and as we get into this and hear staff's report, I want to, you know, remind everybody that this is a municipal code that's been on the books for, you know, over 20 years, and we had a tough experience this last month or two, but I think we need to keep in mind, you know, the 20-year, you know, history of this and the next 20-year future of this. So staff, may we have the presentation, please?
Exactly right. As you said, this is a code that's been on the books for quite a long time, and we want to use this opportunity to kind of come back to you after that tough month we've had. As you know, the city updated the code. The code's neighborhood consent requirement means full written consent, and has used this standard for all applications since we took over the process in the city manager's office in 2019. The recent film permit issues and appeal did highlight some ambiguities in the code, for example, whether or not the applicant must merely solicit written consent or actually receive written consent. Regardless of the outcome of that hearing, staff did intend to come to you to clarify our process and the reading of the film permit code, so we could be as accurate and consistent as possible. At the appeal hearing, a majority of council did seem to indicate that they wanted to depart from the city manager's interpretation and articulated a different threshold for the project in question. The city council's decision to allow for only the immediate neighborhood during the appeal process did represent a policy shift from the way the city manager had been interpreting the code. Given the significant discretion the code gives the city manager, staff no longer feels we have a clear policy direction to fairly and impartially process permit applications going forward. Therefore, we are asking council tonight to give us this direction, so we can be as transparent as possible and be sure that the community knows that our policies are applied equally to all applicants. To further emphasize how necessary this seems to be right now, we have actually received four inquiries or applications for filming since that appeal happens. Three of them have actively questioned the 500-foot requirement due to council's decision, and one has actually submitted an application that we have right now waiting, saying that they have complied with council's new criteria for the immediate neighborhood and asking us to use that criteria. Furthermore, because the filming approved during the appeal did not actually end up taking place due to logistical challenges, we do expect a new application will be submitted from them. I want to be clear that staff is happy to administer any process that council deems in the best interest of the community. We really just need guidance as to what that should be going forward. If you would like to affirm our current code and the city manager's current interpretation of the written consent within a full 500-foot radius, we recommend that you direct staff to bring back a cleaned-up version of the code that does a few things. One, it would change the term solicit to be obtained in all necessary locations. Two, it would use the term written consent consistently instead of merely consent. And three, it would clarify that consent must be obtained; it would not only be the absence of the sense. If, however, council would like to lessen the neighborhood consent requirement based on lessons learned from the recent appeal, staff has drafted a proposed code amendment, and we are asking for your feedback and direction. The main check changes we are recommending as a conversation starter are as follows. One, a lessening of the written consent requirement from the 500-foot radius to the immediate neighborhood, which is defined as the two most immediate neighbors on each side of the property and the three most immediate from the front and rear property line. Two, the removal of the city manager's discretion to waive the requirement, instead replacing it with the ability to determine if a property is vacant. Three, the addition of a consent exception, exemption for large non-residential properties such as the Huntington, who would be allowed to go forward without consent if the actual filming location does not have immediate neighbors within 500 feet, and if there would be no impact on the neighborhood. And four, the narrowing of the scope of a council appeal to be only rate-related to a disagreement with the city manager's vacancy determination. Thank you, and we look forward to your directions for tonight, and I am available for any questions.
Before I open up for questions, how do you envision this conversation going? Would you like us to talk globally about it, or do you want to go step by step through each of the issues?
Sure, I think there's probably two phases. I think the first phase may be if you would prefer to leave, I think, obviously, it can be whatever you would like, but it seems like the conversation at hand is the consent piece, so I think there's the philosophical conversation about if you would like to keep it as it is now, with the city manager's current interpretation of full consent within 500 feet, or if you're interested in relaxing that. And then from there, there'd just be the nuances of direction for changes to the code related to either of those.
Thank you. So then my instincts are, let's have our questions of staff, and then after we have the questions, we can see how we want to, you know, tackle the rest of the discussion, if that makes sense to the group. Okay. Ms. Shepherd-Romney, would you like to kick it off with questions?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to bring up, because I don't know, and this might be directed to Director Savantes, as well as you, about the, one of the issues raised had to do with drone filming, and I don't know, are we requiring, so my big overarching question is, are we requiring drones, you know, by realtors as people put their houses on the market that's becoming increasingly an issue? And I know there are a lot of rules outside of our city that also govern drone use, but I know we had talked about this at a previous council meeting, and I was, am unaware, because it's not part of this. Would that be included, or do we have separate thing to review about that, or did we already do that and it's complete?
Sure. Drone footage, I'm sure there's other regulations for drones that I know the police department can talk about in terms of making sure it's regulated, but in terms of a drone being used for filming, it would fall under this code.
Would or would not?
It would.
Okay.
It would. And we have actually, in the draft language, cleaned up that section a bit about commercial filming and what the definition was. We're, again, open to any feedback on this, but kind of narrowing out the scope to clarify that we're looking at bigger picture things. If someone is coming in for under 60 minutes to take a quick photo shoot, it's not what we're really trying to go after here. So we do have language in a proposed version that could kind of clarify a bit of what we mean by commercial filming, but drone use would fall under this.
Okay, and to that end, so I would like to, I have not focused on that, but I know that many other cities do include it within their filming, but there is pretty extensive but it, there is pretty extensive language, whether it's in the permit, which I don't know what a term, new permit would be, um, but definitely, um, to work it into this a little bit more to make it clear. So I, I can work with you next time if, if the rest of the council is so inclined. Um, my second question has to do.
May I, are you, uh, leaving drones at the moment?
She had, does it.
Right. I just wanted to ask one question, clarifying. Um, Chief Encanto, didn't you tell us a long time ago there was some form of requirement to be able to fly a drone? And if so, should that also be included in this? And if I'm mistaken, uh, let's just eliminate that question. Didn't you inform us a long, not a long time ago, uh, within the last year, it all feels like a long time ago, that there was some type of requirement to be able to fly a drone?
Yes, uh, I should answer this in two parts. First, your question, the answer is yes. You have to register any UAS, which is a proper term, uh, based upon, and there's a certain number of grams and below, you don't. Most commercial drones, most drones used for filming are, exceed that weight. So you have to register it with the FAA. As far as regulation and enforcement, the FAA controls that space. So we may or may not be able to, certain things in a ordinance about filming, dealing with drones, it will require additional research.
Thank you. I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman, I was just trying to get clarification on drones specifically. So maybe we can research that a little bit more in addition. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Vice Mayor and Councilmember, if, if drones is something that you're interested in exploring, what we need from you tonight is your direction on those. So it would be helpful to know if your intent as it relates to drones is to permit them or not permit them. That will help us when we do our research to figure out what to bring back when you get to the discussion.
Okay, thank you. You continue. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you, and we'll come back to the drone issue, sorry. Um, and I had a couple other questions. Our daily, I, I noticed in, in both the staff report and there's no mention of fees. The fee, um, in our ordinance, although it does, I think it says applicable fees, but you could correct me if I'm wrong, um, at 11.08.07 filming permit fees, um, just requires established by the resolution of council. So my understanding is from looking at past film permit, like, for example, that we considered last month or, and within the last couple of months, we have a daily fee, but do we also have an actual application fee? And if so, because I did see that also in another city, so I was wondering where we stood within that regard. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, we have both, uh, daily fee and a daily processing fee, if that makes sense. So if we're talking about motion filming, um, on a, and then there's different city facility or a private property. If we're talking about motion filming, private property, it's $500 per day for filming, then $70 additional processing fee per day. So it comes out to $770 per day to film on a private property.
Thank you. And, and there are obviously, along the same lines, there are still photography fees.
Correct, and they're a little bit lower.
And then a commercial or property, and then I assume even city property. If somebody, for example, wanted to film at Lacy Park or, or City Hall or where.
Correct. If someone would like to film on our properties, it's the fee goes up, and it's actually $2,000 a day to film, for example, at Lacy Park, $2,500 a day to film on our public streets, and then you still would pay that $270 processing fee every day.
And then the application fee itself, is that?
That's part of that daily processing fee.
Okay, so that is what you're considering. There isn't a, just a fee review, you know, when somebody makes an application, and you went through all the trouble like you did before. We don't have a fee that people pay upfront.
That is correct.
For your review.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, my third question is, has to do with, um, are we requiring all cities, or, um, I'm sorry, all, if it is a company or commercial enterprise, are they required to have a business license here as well?
Yes, they are.
In addition to the fees?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. And another question I had was concerning the number of days and over a specific time period. So where would I, I know that it does say in the code section that there are no more than, and I'm sorry, for council, it's page 25 or 2-7. 11.08.09 talks about the limitation of no more than four resident permitting, uh, filming permits issued pursuant, um, for a single property during a calendar year. So that could be four months, or it could be four days, or it could be anything in between.
That's correct. There's an ambiguity in the code right now. We are recommending, as you see there in the redline version, that if we do, do a code amendment, uh, cleaning that up a bit, there's really no difference in our procedural notion of a license versus a permit. So what we're recommending is change, getting rid of the idea of a resident license and just talking about the permit, um, making it clear that what we call a permit is the, whatever request they give us, um, on that day, that they, we would then approve. Um, that would count as one of those times. But if you have an interest in making a cap at five days, 10 days, of that being the longest for, um, a filming permit, we are more than happy to work that in.
Right, because I was just, a-again, in reviewing other, um, cities like us, and even the city of LA, they seem to be, they talk about consecutive number of days for a certain permit, and then they also talk about the number of times of year that you can get a permit. Or otherwise, the inverse of that is they just say 12 days.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or, you know, they just set a total limit, and it's up to people, if they've, you know, sometimes, for example, you, you might not know what it would be. So you might just do three for the start of something, and then come back for more and more and more. So I wanted to see where, so we do need to work on that language if the council, is that your suggestion?
Yes, it is.
All right, and I think I'm almost done. Um, I think that's it for right now, but, um, the rest we can do in our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, do you have any questions to staff?
Yes, I just want to clarify, um, so the current code is only for filming, like, movies and, um, you know, TV shows, but not for, like, commercial realtor advertisements?
It's for any commercial filming. Um, so we've noted, our definition does not clarify specifically what commercial filming is. In this proposed amendment, we did introduce some suggestion language to narrow that a bit, or just to really clarify what commercial could be. Um, different cities define it differently, different agencies define it differently. Some agencies like us don't define it at all. So we'd really be happy to take any feedback you give us and directions of really clarify what we mean by that, because we could narrow it in any way we'd like.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talt, do you have any questions? Staff?
Yes, did you, um, in, in looking at this, did you look at any cities where the discretion of the city manager has, um, more specific items under which the city manager could exercise that discretion? Uh, and, and I say this primarily because one of the distinctions between what we approved partially and, and, and the 500-foot was that it was going to, it, there was no parking on the streets or very limited parking. And in that instance, it seemed to me that the footprint was small enough that the rationale behind the law, and that is to keep the large trucks and, and have the neighborhood, uh, totally disrupted by it. Did you look at any cities to determine whether there was any type of that exception or, um, a, a discretion that could be exercised to allow it under those instances?
That's a good question. And it, what's interesting is it seems like a lot of agencies, there's not one set format that people use and then have, uh, little discretion on. It seems like there's quite a few different interpretations and ways that cities do this. Um, I will say that most of the time that I saw discretion and changes had to do with getting consent. Um, a lot of cities don't require written consent unless it gets to those things that you're talking about. So for example, I cannot remember the city, but some cities do, where you do not need written consent, but if there's going to be cars parked in front of someone else's house, then you need written consent from them. If it's going to be filming after the normal set standard hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, you would need written consent from them. Um, so there is a lot of ways that we could work in discretion or take away discretion or change the consent requirement.
Okay, I, uh, one of the problems that I saw was that the, the, the city manager was giving discretion, but there was no real explanation as to where that discretion could be exercised. And part of this, i- it takes care of part of that problem. Um, also, the, for the definition of commercial still or mo-, uh, still or motion filming that you've added, where did you get that language?
There was a discussion I had with the city attorney mixed with a few different, um, definitions we saw out there. We are not at all wedded to this definition, really wanted as a conversation starter with the idea that some places have that kind of, um, time distinction as instead of kind of specifically calling out an industry which could get dangerous. We are happy to look for other terms that you would find more useful.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that this isn't useful, but it, um, it, in, to, to, I, I think, I recall, uh, Councilmember Wong discussing the issue, what do you do with someone who is on TikTok or, um, I, I know there's a, a person in town, and I don't know whether or not she has a business license or not to do this, or has a permit, but she films interviews for a pod of some sort. And i- i- and whether or not that is intended to be covered under the permit requirement.
I think for our interpretation of why we added that last line that says "individuals other than the resident will be present" was a way of kind of carving out that person who may be at home alone for their channel. But if you would like to change that to two people, three people, and.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not. I'm just, written right now, if, if I were to go home and spend, um, two hours trying to put together a TikTok, and that TikTok has, um, uh, cornflakes in it, and I'm trying to get a deal with cornflakes so that they will pay me for my TikTok, so we're trying to reach a certain level, would I be required to get a permit?
Under the new proposal we have, you would not.
And, and where in this new proposal does this?
Um, in that 11.08.01, that last line that says, um, "and in the case of residential filming, individuals other than the resident will be present." So that was our way of trying to get it, if you were home alone. Then again, if you had hired a filmmaker to come film you doing your TikTok, then you would be. That's kind of how we tried to write it.
Okay, because it's an and, could, could, where the person conducting the filming will be present for more than 60 minutes. I'm there for two hours, uh, but I'm there alone.
Right.
I, I would need a permit?
Correct.
Okay. I, I may, I, I'm thinking we should probably be as specific as possible in this instance to avoid the confusion. Um, I will have to look at this a lot more, but I appreciate the attempt at finding some balance between getting ridiculous over the, uh, the use of permit when in today's age, everybody's filming something and thinking that they're going to be the next, uh, TikTok star. Um, and, uh, actually finding that TikTok star, making sure that they're, they're permitted.
We would appreciate that.
And they're here in San.
On, on that note as well, we are, I appreciate that because we were trying to walk the line here between, uh, making sure that we are having a fair and equitable policy that is being, uh, applied equally across the board, while at the same time not having 18 film permits a day. We don't, we aren't staff for that. Traditionally, the film permit process has taken very little staff time to administer. Uh, the more layered, nuanced and specific with variations the policy becomes, the more time, of course, it will take to administer it. So we're trying to find that sweet spot, and we very much appreciate all of your help in helping us get there.
In, in, in that regard, I will save the, the comment, but, uh, a- as to throwing out the baby with bathwater, um, on reducing the 500-foot because as, and perhaps you didn't hear that, but I made it perfectly clear that this was an exception in that we shouldn't throw out the 500-foot requirement back when I voted to, uh, approve it last time. So I, I, but we could discuss that when we bring this back.
Any other questions, Staff?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I think everybody here has been reflecting. When this was initially written, any one of us would never have thought of anything beyond the large movie, movie trucks that we see in South Pass and, um, craft trucks and things like that. And we've just covered 10 or 12 different types of filming. So yes, I think this, um, to get it right, we will have to do a number of rewrites, and I'm delighted that among our five minds, we're saying what about and what about. So I think this is a very good process. So I'll start with my first what about. And, um, how, it appears to be silent to newscasts. Um, if there's something of interest and the media comes out here, um, can you just sort of comment on that?
Sure, and if I say this wrong, I'm sure the city attorney can weigh in. From my understanding, that does not count for a commercial film. They have a First Amendment right to do newscast without a, a permit.
Even though these are for-profit stations?
That's correct.
It might be helpful to, to simply state that they don't have to so that when this goes out, um, it'll be so clear to people. Next question, um, it appears, and again, I may be missing it because I, I, I appreciate all the strikeouts and additions that you put into this. It appears that we are not treating the owner and the tenant as two separate approvals. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We did not, we stayed silent on that.
Um, I'm sorry, were you going to say something? Oh, okay. Um, because it feels like, um, at least based on what I was told was in the Chinese Daily Journal following, um, the last request, a homeowner was concerned that they weren't contacted. So you are saying that is something we should decide as a council, correct?
I, yes, I think that would be a great thing to discuss and decide. And I will say that since we published the staff report and a little more research, I have seen cities that do specifically make that statement, that you need to get the homeowner's approval.
Thank you. And then another question on the same issue with the homeowner. As I was looking over some of the signatures in the last request that we had, um, we do have some monolingual residents in this city, specifically Mandarin-speaking. And I think it was even noticed, or noted, rather, that they didn't understand or something to that effect. So would we be able to include in our recommendations if we do want written signatures that, um, the request to be presented both, um, in, in both languages so that people are clear what would be occurring in their area?
I don't see why that wouldn't be a problem. Seems like a great idea.
Thank you. Um, and then, I, I also am going to, um, the issue of four resident filming permits to be issued per calendar year. Um, and again, I may be missing it. Does it give me a maximum number of days that I would be permitted?
It does not.
So I could come to you for four, each with, say, 12 weeks?
As it is written, you could.
Okay. Um, I, I would be in favor of either cutting down from four to two or somehow adding a maximum number of days. However, adding in a clause, uh, if a reshoot is necessary, that there be a provision for that. We, we don't want to be brutal, but, um, I think leaving it open-ended could really leave us open. Earlier, I think I might have misunderstood you when you said from 7:30 to 7:00 PM. Um, but maybe I, I did misunderstand you because in writing it says 9:00 PM. Um, but under that, um, it says, "no filming or related activity shall take place no later than 9:00 PM." So if we wrap up at 9:00, and I do have a fair number of vehicles with equipment and the like, that can then take me till 10:00 or 10:30, correct?
Yes, and I was using theoretical times from other cities.
Okay, gotcha.
That is correct. Our times are 7:30 AM to 9 o'clock PM.
No problem.
And in the situation you described, they should be literally out by 9:00 PM, meaning the filming should stop to get them out and their car is gone by 9:00 PM.
So I think, um, adding the, the phrase of that is the intent, and all vehicles removed or are gone by 9:00, I think would be more instructive. And again, we, we just want to be helpful so that people are not doing anything innocently. And that finishes my questions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I have no question.
Thank you, and I have no questions. I'd like to open it.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Because I didn't know we were going through the ethical wording and I'm sorry. So since my fellow council member, um, brought this up, uh, for, um, just to follow on, uh, Councilmember Talt's, um, point or, or questions and area of inquiry, I also had a problem for the purposes of this article, you know, in your very beginning one where you tried to define, or you define commercial still or motion filming. Really anything in my mind that's after the 60 minutes, I know you were trying to get the individuals other than residents present, but anything past that, I think I would strike because it further complicates and because you're talking about in the case of residential filming, again, we're now talking about commercial filming. So that confused me because we don't have residential filming really unless we're going to define that too. That's your first qualifier. And you say individuals other than residents will be present. So if we have a problem, if we're trying to do the TikTok, I think we have to really be careful about how it's written. I understand what you're saying. And the other problem in the line above, it says, um, commercial for-profit purpose either on public or private property. And it says where the person, and now we've, in the immediate thing, we talked about a person, a business or other entities conducting the filming will be present. Do you know what I'm saying?
Hmm, yeah.
So it, there needs to be work on this and I didn't think that this helped, if you will. For me, that was more of a problem creating here at, by this language. I, I do think we need to work on that and I don't know how to give you that. Next section has something that talks about within the immediate neighborhood, right? Which we are going to define. And then you talk about within the perimeter of the, you take out the word property, which I don't understand, and switched it to lot right there. But yet throughout the entire rest of the redlined version, it's all about property and that's the only use of a lot. So in my mind, that created some concern over, are we making two separate, we trying to make a distinction here? And if so, I don't know whether it was our city attorney wants us to use a different definition of property or was there some impact of the word lot being added that's meant to clarify this? Because for me, it did not help and it just made this more confusing because that's the only place where we actually introduced this new term and we never defined it.
City Attorney Cao, is there a reason legally where it would matter? Could we change that back to property?
We, we can change, we can change that back to property. I'm not sure if Director Cervantes is there and if there may have any other planning implications that, that I'm not thinking of right now.
I think he's shaking his head, no.
We can go back to property.
Yeah, then that's a good catch and we can go back. I think we may have, um, grabbed that language perhaps from the definition of neighborhoods that, that's under our zoning chapter and perhaps I didn't get caught when we changed, um, the rest of that section to encompass the immediate neighborhood language.
Okay. And then I had another, uh, question. There's that underlined added section immediately below this that talks about notwithstanding the regulations in this section, filming location located within the historic and cultural zones shall require written consent if any of the following apply. And obviously, you know, there's 500 feet of residential property, vehicles and equipment. So are we saying as many parts of our city are now this potential historic designated zone? I just didn't understand what, what, and what's the, where do we have cultural?
This is a specific zone that right now is just the Huntington Library. Obviously, they're in a different situation than a lot of our residential properties in terms of the size of their lot. When they're filming, many times that they're in the middle of their property, they're nowhere near residences. So what we're trying to do here is if we were taking away the city manager's discretion, we want to clarify that there may be times where the Huntington does not need to get the entire 500-foot perimeter or any, even neighbors there not within 500 feet.
But I thought that was handled by the next section, which is 11.08.03, where you have an exception to the consent requirement. And the language is if the applicant can prove that there are no neighbors within 500 feet of the filming location. So that I thought was the precluding. And this to me, because we do have others, we have the Old Mill, which has weddings where people film at. We have other historic designated historic features in our city. So I, I don't know why, or I was confused as to what this encompasses or whether we just should strike this.
I think you're correct. The second one is relatively redundant with the first. So we could strike the one from the first or 110803.
Right. Oh, wait, oh, strike the one from 110802.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, sorry, I wanted to ask, well, I don't know if you want to do this now, but some of the restrictions on filming, that's 11.08.05, seems that many other cities talk about, um, that the area has to be left clean, et cetera, you know, the vacated of equipment within two hours, that type of restrictions, no pyrotechnics, you know, because we have wood roofs and things like that. I'm sure, so these, those type of things are added within the restrictions and I wanted to, I don't know if we want to discuss that as a council and I could bring it up then or, um, see if, if you have other thoughts on where we would be putting such restrictions.
I think that is, we're definitely into suggestions on adding more, um, concrete examples of things that would be dangerous. I will say that our fire chief and police chief review every permit we receive and would obviously not let something pass if they felt it would be a danger to the city.
Right, okay. And we also have some cities preclude outside public lighting of the property at night or after certain hours. So those type of restrictions would be here if we want to have them. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, absolutely. Any other questions before we go for public comment?
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, you had asked maybe what would be helpful in terms of how to handle this discussion. And based on the questions that I've heard, there, there, the critical thing that we need to get tonight is direction. We have, as Ms. Fowler indicated, already a permit, uh, that we need to figure out how to evaluate. So we need to get some general direction from you on what directions you'd like us to go. The most, the most pressing need is around the consent requirement. Would you prefer that we stick with 500 feet? I'll, I'll wrap up, I promise. Uh, or go to this top, this tighter one, uh, or is there conditions for the two? Once you've given us direction on that, it might be that if there's going to be a, you know, kind of a wordsmithing of the whole ordinance, it might be that you want to appoint some liaisons for us to work with to get an ordinance back in front of you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, anyone in the virtual world?
Yes. Mr. John Dustin, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Just want to make a few comments about this. I, I think in general, I, you know, the purpose of our community is, if you look back at the original founding statement, there was language of, uh, providing gracious residential living. Uh, doesn't say anything about generating revenue from residential property. So I think, uh, although there is a place for this in our community, there is no need to be lavish, uh, when trying to decide what, uh, opportunities to allow residents, uh, to generate revenue based on commercial filming. With this proposed ordinance, I see a couple of things that trouble me. Uh, it, you know, 500 feet may be too big. The immediate neighborhood language is, I think, a little too small. Uh, somewhere in there, you're going to have to find a happy medium. There's got to be a way to make this float with the size of the project. Um, I'll just give you a scenario that disturbs me as a resident. If it's a project that has, you know, large, uh, studio trucks, craft services, generator trailers and things parked on my street, um, even four days of that a year is going to really try my patience. And if it was four weeks at different times of the year, that would really annoy me. And the thing that would really annoy me is that there's no way to notify people if they're not in the neighborhood. So there could be a project proposed and I'm just outside the neighborhood and I won't know about it until the day all the trucks show up. And what if that's the same day that I'm planning a Jubilee anniversary party for my elderly parents and I've invited all their friends and now they have to park two blocks away to walk to my house? I would be very irate. So there's got to be a way to sort of accommodate that and let people know what is about to hit their neighborhood. And I don't know if there's a way to tie the consent to the project. So if you're going to park in front of my house, you need to have my consent. Um, and that is, will be regardless of the size of the neighborhood. So, but it just in general, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, the, the kind of project that was proposed most recently that caused all that kerfuffle, that's not something that concerns me. But I think there is no need to be lavish in this and giving away, um, rights to, to use residential property to generate income. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin. So as I hear the conversation, just trying to frame for, for our discussion, oh, I'm sorry, is there any more people in the virtual world to speak?
No, there are no other people asking to speak on it.
All right, thank you. Here's, I've processed our questions and hear the discussion. I think there are clearly a lot of variables here, right? Inside versus outside, uh, residential versus commercial, large versus small, long versus short, uh, you know, a lot of variables. So I think what we might want to focus on are what are our guiding principles here? One of the guiding principles might be, you know, do we want to loosen up the, the filming requirements or keep it pretty tight to, to, to get through? Because I, I think that will help to provide some direction for staff as a redraft. I heard there's a suggestion of getting a couple council members to work with staff to come up with what, you know, the next proposal might be, which that, that feels like it makes sense, uh, to me. Another key thing I think is our definition of what the neighborhood is that might deserve some conversation, uh, this evening and then maybe a little bit around, uh, you know, with, with the consent. Is it solicit or is it obtained? So if, if it makes sense to council, I think what I'd like to suggest is we focus first on, do we want to, I mean, clearly we want the next ordinance to, to clean it up so it's, it's clear, right? But do we want to loosen up and make it easier to get filming or do we want to keep it fairly tough for people to get filming? So I'd like to invite some discussion around that.
Can I just, uh, answer in part by way of background because I did speak to, um, Mayor Simmons, uh, who was mayor at the time of this in 1988, um, and to get her input and , uh, understanding of, of what was happening in the city both at the time and what they made, because it is vague and we're struggling, um, with how to interpret it for best. And I think the intention at that time was stemmed from a number of TV shows and movie filming that was going on here and starting to be an issue, um, with neighbors to those properties. And so they felt at a city council level, they could not just, uh, you know, uh, have this as pull a business permit and have at it and, you know, maybe talk to the chief of the police or the, uh, fire chief at the time and just make sure, you know, you had all your, you know, safety things. But really it was impacting other residents, whether it's on some of these streets, I understand from my conversation with her, they were even on, you know, like Oak Knoll, some of these small streets that were really creating parking issues or, or traffic issues. And it got to the point of annoyance because San Marino was given its beautiful homes and, um, look that was attracting a lot of filming. And so I think that hel- should help guide us because I think they did a, a fine job at the time. They probably were one of the very earliest cities to kind of limit this, I don't know, you know, and a lot has cha- changed since then. So I appreciate we're going to update it and I think our, our community does, but I think the underlying, um, uh, desire remains the same, that we have a private community that people would like to preserve their residential quality of life at the highest levels. And we need to allow commercial filming at homes, but we need to do so with an eye to always preserving, you know, whether it's, uh, um, Commissioner Dustin's comments today or others that we've heard and letters that we've received, to really preserve the highest quality of life because that's why people move here and we do not allow a lot of commercial activities at homes, you know, we just don't. And that, this isn't the place for that. So I do think in understanding the historic background that even got this on our, um, book, so to speak, that it was always to be restrictive and limited in a few cases, a few days, but really go forward and try to respect everybody's right to use and enjoy their property and not be inconvenienced where things could get out of control.
Okay. So on the topic of loosening up and making it easier, keeping it a little more restrictive, Mr. Talt, what are your, your thoughts and discussion points?
I, I come at it, uh, from a similar aspect as, uh, Councilmember Shepherd-Rami. When I look at this, where our opportunity comes is in exercising the, the, being concerned and exercising our obligation to protect the public health, safety and welfare. And my own experience is when you live in a, on a street where they're filming for several days, it, it destroys whatever general welfare that I, that I have or the neighborhood has. So I am in favor of restricting it. However, finding a, 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 an ability to detail discretion on behalf of the city manager when a project is for all intents and purposes not going to interfere with the neighborhood. And, and I don't know off the top of my head language that would do it. There's some great suggestive language in here regarding further defining so we don't run into the same problem and I'm all fair to that. I think we should require them to obtain consent, not solicit. That was confusing. And so we've cleared that up. But I'm in favor of maintaining our, our, um, uh, in the exercise of our obligation in restricting San Marino from becoming, um, a, another Hollywood lot. And so I would, I, I would not throw out the baby with the bash, with bathwater and not get rid of the 500, but there are some things we can do and that's, for example, um, if the 500 is on a block away, you know, we, we're going across major streets where there wasn't going to be that interference, unless they're going to park there, I guess, you know, the 500 feet does make sense, but I'm in favor of keeping it restricted.
Okay. Dr. Wong, where are you on the issue of making it easier or keeping it restricted?
Yeah, no, really would I agree with, uh, Councilmember Talt, but he was right about, you know, last film permit, uh, appeal was, uh, an exception. So I'm in favor of, you know, restrictions. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, where do you, where do you stand on this?
What, uh, Mr. Dustin said really resonated with me, you know, this, this has become a, a, an extremely complex issue for us to look at because it's not just about issuing these permits. What if it does affect me and my individual street, my neighborhood, even though I'm not part of the radius being taken into account? It's interesting that, you know, for all these years, it's pretty much received no notice and I think we've liked it that way, but we, um, have awakened the, uh, sleeping giant and I think going forward, we're going to be having significant interest, at least in the foreseeable future on this issue. So yes, I want to be restrictive, um, but I think we need to be, uh, kind with small projects that don't have impact. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I, I do view that we should keep this restrictive and, and not loosen up and make it easier. Is this the type of feedback you're after? Okay. Uh, then I think, you know, a couple other issues is, um, the definition of the neighborhood and consent. So I think I'd like to talk about consent first. Do we feel we need to have obtained consent or solicit consent?
Mayor, I apologize. Could I just confirm that what I just heard is what we heard? What we heard is that you'd like to keep the 500-foot radius, but perhaps add in some sort of?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
The, the basic theme, basic theme is we want to keep it, you know, still a little restrictive to do filming here. And we'll, and we'll get to the, to the definition of the neighborhood next, or in a minute. Gretchen, what are your thoughts around consent?
Um, well, I will say what appealed to me most was that some cities require notice to go out to 500 feet or sometimes I've seen 300 or 200. So I have heard different measurements, only, or I, I, I've read them in their ordinances. Only one other city did I find that was, you know, the two in front or whatever, you know, two on the side, three in front, three beha- behalf. So that seems to be, you know, us and just one or two others. Um, again, I didn't do a total survey, but I looked at similarly situated cities and even like Pasadena. So I tried to get local cities as well. But I thought it was, the majority are talking about 300 feet and I think that would make it more reasonable. However, I do appreciate that sometimes we have properties in town and I'm sure we all know that, you know, they have a 500-foot front yard and so does their neighbor. So that wouldn't even, that would just be the three neighbors around them or what, you know, what have you. So, um, I'm a little concerned and I, I appreciated, um, Mr. Dustin's comment that, I think, or maybe it was, uh, Councilmember Talt's, but that there is some sort of need to have a floating it was Councilmember Talt, but that there is some sort of need to have a floating, you know, it has to be, and that was the idea with the neighbors, because having a strict foot from feet from the property line, it seemed overly inclusive when we put in at 500. But that was, that was, we were referring, I think, back to our, some of the planning commission notices, that wasn't really obtaining consent. This is the only instance where we're asking people whether it's solicit or obtain consent. There's another way to go about it is that a lot of these cities have actually a form that they send out that says, Temple City has a great, very simple film permit process. And they just have a one page that everybody gets in whatever is the defined neighborhood. And it even says, you know, sign this, and I do not object or I object for the following reasons. Now, it doesn't state that they need 100% consent, but it's just that they have to get this out there to all within their stated thing and get these. And obviously, the vacancy, we have an issue in our city. But I really appreciate having a very simple and even as something if there's multiple building managers or property owner, is it the tenant? But I like the idea of that.
So you're in favor more of a solicit rather than obtained?
Right, and making it broad, because I think that's the issue. Where are the parking trucks? Where are the people going and hoop light, et cetera, like that?
Dr. Wong, where are you on the solicit versus obtain?
Oh, I like to be consistent, you know, I like to stick with the legal neighborhood, so obtain instead of solicit.
Yeah, because again, the legal neighborhood, we're gonna get to next. But I mean,
Yeah, the 500, yeah, obtained.
Mr. Talt, what are your thoughts?
I'm for obtaining the written consent. Because I I think one of the reasons, one of the problems we saw is there was photographs of them going there and trying to get the consent. And so there was too much play in what the solicitation was for me to be comfortable. And so I would prefer obtaining the written consent. They have to work harder. But, you know, if you're gonna burden your neighborhood for your benefit, then you're gonna have to work harder.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Hands down, obtain, and that is evidenced by planning commission hearings, design review committee hearings, where they got no, they sent notice out to the neighbors, they heard nothing. Then people show up at the meeting and say, well, I didn't know about this. Or when it's moving along and they've decided they don't like it, they appear. So let's get this upfront in writing and make it crystal clear what's happening in your neighborhood.
And I too would be for obtain rather than solicit. And I think, I think the way this conversation's going, we're all gonna have another bite at this apple when we see
Maybe a couple.
A couple, yeah. Drafts and redrafts.
We're making it fruit salad right now.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to discussing what a legal neighborhood might be or the feet radius. Dr. Wong, what are your thoughts on that?
Oh, 500.
500 feet, okay. Mr. Talt?
500.
Gretchen?
I am the duck, and I think as evidenced by the permission or the attempts at soliciting, you know, for the last project that had over 200 and almost 250, I don't know the exact number, but I remember it was an extreme amount of work that had to be done and properties that had to be contacted. And for me, that was just too much in that area. Again, I think that those homeowners probably 500 feet away would not have been impacted. So that's why I think more reasonable, either maybe we do it by area if we're taking the time to do this and work with Director Savantes or and Amanda, Ms. Fowler, to correctly limit it, because 500 feet doesn't work in some areas of our city or will only get six. And 500 feet down where I live will get, you know, 20. So there's a big difference. And I think just, that's my problem with stating something. I understand the impact, and I want the neighbors that will be affected to know about it and same permit if that's where we're going. But I do think just a flat amount, I have a problem with.
May I just comment on one thing? Because it, it, when I look back at that situation, it was unique in several regards. And that is typically when they're going out for a film permit, you're talking about one location.
Right, true.
And there they were looking at four locations, and that's why their work looked so much more difficult. And when I focused in on the fact, well, i- if you're talking about one location, 500 feet doesn't seem as drastic as when you're talking about four locations and, you know, suddenly you have to get a full 2,000 feet all together. So that's why I'm able to distinguish those.
But you still have the problem with one location has 40 or 50 on some of those applications and some didn't, depending on where they lived in town. And again, you know, you're in different areas that to me, you know, it's not an aerial thing. Maybe that's our drone talk, but I don't think they're necessarily gonna be limited in that. But I'm happy to go with the majority of council
Okay.
because I understand.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm really afraid of that slippery slope and just getting flooded with apps. So I like the 500, but we might have some small variance. So Councilmember Talt can do his TikTok and on some really small defined projects, we could have a lesser area. But I think 500 is a great way to cover all.
And when I process this, I go the first overriding principle is keep it a little bit more restrictive. I think 500 feet is a little more confusing, where, you know, three people that way, five people that way gets to be pretty easy to count. I appreciate the difference that in parts of the city, 500 feet is much different than 500 feet on twin pumps. So, you know, for the group that's gonna process this, there's my feedback.
So we probably need a little more from you guys on that one.
I, I think you've heard that the group wants to be restrictive. And you might want to study what works best, 500 feet or counting houses. And you might do that in some of the different density areas of the community. Because again, up by the Huntington, this can be different than south of Huntington Drive.
Well, also, and may I say, I appreciated Council, Vice Mayor Jacobowski's, if something is entirely, I think we can carve out for the scenario of the TikTok or the whatever. It's not so much that it's a commercial speech, because like Councilmember Talt says, they may be promoting cornflakes or whatever it is, a certain brand of item, right, as part of their TikTok.
Frosted flakes, I was thinking of frosted.
I'm sorry, you know, I don't eat
No, I didn't say cornflakes.
We support cornflakes.
We're for NOLA family, but so, and you should be too, Berkeley grad. But so my only point is, if we can, if the resident can fill in the form that they are only doing interior by themselves or with a family member, it will not be any exterior shooting, there will be no cars, equipment, truck, lighting, pyrotechnic, whatever, you know, it will comply with the other restrictions in paragraph or section, whatever. I would think we can be much more limited. And that really is just about the neighbors, you know, just being put, maybe not even. But, you know, but then when we're talking about something that involves the interior and exterior, that's where I'm talking about the, what seems reasonable.
And we know that drones are becoming common with real estate advertisement. So, you know, just to be able to address it. But again, I don't know if we really need to go that drastic, but then Chief would weigh in on the other requirements.
About, about drones, the city of Pasadena has an excellent two-page request for an unnamed vehicle that lists, you know, the FAA, all those, I believe what the chief was describing to us in terms of the requirements about the piloting, et cetera. So there are really good and I think very updated that we could rely on our city staff to take a look at and see if they're comfortable with those. And I would direct them to City of Pasadena as a great example of drone as a separate kind of thing.
But on that one, still determining how far the neighborhood should be.
Notice, yeah.
Can I just make a comment? Again, this 500 feet has worked in the past to limit the amount of permitting that has been requested. People come here and learn that we have a 500-foot requirement. And as I believe the city manager and has explained in the past, people learn about it and then walk away, saying that's, that's too much. So if we're looking to keep it restricted, let's stick with what's worked in the past. And that's why I like the 500 as opposed to, and find some way of crafting an exception that, that limits the, or that doesn't limit the type of person who just wants to do something really simple and is not going to burden the neighborhood by doing that.
So it sounds like to me, if I could summarize, that we're looking at keeping the 500-foot radius for obtaining written consent. But if there's, let's say, entirely inside and cars are either parked in driveways or only in front of that person's house, we could potentially just do that immediate neighborhood. Is that kind of where we're getting at?
Also with a time limitation if we're going to, you, you still can't do that one for a few weeks because it's maybe a specialized permit, if you will, but we don't want it overdone. But that would be the only exception.
There are a lot of variables on this one, and you're not gonna get one recipe that's gonna satisfy all the variables. So, you know, my advice is that almost you need to break it into some smaller buckets and get the rules for each of the smaller buckets. So, you know, one time only inside your house is different than, you know, six episodes out on the street. So it would be hard to, you know, apply rules across both of those criteria.
And it's not just exterior and interior. You could have an exterior, interior shoot where suddenly they're showing up with four trucks and crafts and, you know, 75 union members. You know, so it, it, it doesn't matter to me whether it's interior or exterior. It's the burden that they put on the neighborhood by the bringing in the influence of both trucks and individuals for even a day is a pain.
I, I think that direction is clear. I, I think we've got the two extremes on either side, and we can try to figure out where the line is, at least the next time that you come back and see it. The other thing to keep in mind is that the amount of consent that you require will act as a check on some of this stuff. If the production company is coming in and saying, hey, I'm gonna be filming in your neighborhood for seven weeks in a row with semis, we may not even need to have a ban on that in our policy, because my guess is that some neighbors are gonna object to that. So that is an extra check.
I, I think, Mayor, if we can discuss the amount of filming at anyone's property, because I think we also need to establish that. And it's vague in this regard with four permits that don't have, have a specific set time. And so I'm hoping that we can come to an understanding at council level for permits could be four days or as, you know, we've all talked about, much longer than that. And it seems like cities are all over the map. Some actually do limit the number of days just flat out. I've seen as small as three days, three consecutive days as seen in a year. But some do it by quarter, some people do it two consecutive weeks by a number of times. So I think that's a big issue that we need to clarify for all, anything outside of immediate household. And when I'm talking about, it's not so much internal interior as much as there are no trucks, there are no food wagons, there are no, I don't know what else they have, but you know what I mean? Those have no equipment. What I'm thinking about, what we, you know, need to make clear when we're talking about those residential interior, we're not going to hold them to this high standard of obtaining all these consents. It really is, there is no impact in your neighbors. You should send out something possibly if you're going in the backyard and are gonna film the front of the house.
So, so would that then be if truck or more than four cars, then there's, there's a cap on the number of days?
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, because I think that begins to impact, just like we have no
I mean, that might be part of definition of
Our parking is
larger, large versus small, a larger project might be, you know, four cars and/or a truck might be defined as a larger project.
Right.
And therefore, no more than, I'm just saying six, I don't know what the number is.
However, I'm sorry, the last applicant brought up 10 vehicles, if we remember, so that would move them into a large project.
I'm just, I'm just talking out loud and try to get the conversation.
Right, and I also think we should make it clear, well, we have, we have parking restrictions already. And so clearly, they were trying to limit that from the get-go. And I think everybody agrees when we hear from the public or get letters by email, that's a big concern. How's it gonna impact me in having equipment or trailers with generators and star wagons and then the food tent and then the whatever? That's an entirely different project. So I would think that, you know, we might want to prohibit that altogether and just have personal vehicles. And if they're going to have other things, then they have to arrange parking at a commercial location and rent a parking lot to set up anything like that. It's not gonna be in front of somebody's home or their neighbor's home. We're not gonna have that on our streets in our residential R1 areas and leave it, you know, put something like that, because that's what impacts you, I would think, our homeowners. And that's what people hear and are put out by. And a lot of cities do limit parking in front of, if it's not on the driveway, you're not doing it, you know? So those restrictions are in other cities throughout California. And I think that would limit the size of the project if we have something like that. And that's a restrictive and a reasonable use for enjoyment.
Now, in the interest of time and moving this ball forward, what, what is, Staff, what are your thoughts? Do you want to take the task force approach and go away and come back with, you know, a draft? Do you want to pose different questions for us to continue discussing? Because I'm afraid that this discussion could just go on for hours and days and days. But it'll get more productive if we actually have, you know, something on writing in front of us that we can
I think the time period, though, we should discuss today, because I think that will
Yeah, if you could, if you could give us direction on if you're interested in a cap in the number of days per permit and/or the number of permits, if you could also give us direction on how much consent needs to be obtained. So you've already, four of you have said they want
I think they did, it's 100%.
Yeah, I thought it was
I did, okay, I just want to be sure, because I didn't hear the decision about 100%, I just heard obtained. So as long as we know what the threshold is
I think I heard obtain 100% within 500 feet
Fantastic.
is the next draft.
Then
And I think the number of days will depend on your definitions. Because if the definition is six cars and two trucks, that's not gonna be many days. If your definition of the project is, you know, one car in the driveway, I think that's probably a different answer for the number of permitted days.
And I guess I would just say, is it safe to assume that all of you generally feel like there's a breakpoint in there that you would restrict it if it's a bigger project, but you would permit it longer if it's a smaller project? Does that represent?
I'd go medium or bigger versus small.
Okay, medium or bigger versus small. Okay, then it's just a matter of wordsmithing what that means. I think at this point, we have the general direction that we need. And if you would be comfortable appointing two people, that would be great.
Are there any council members who would like to work with Staff on craft needs?
I don't have the time. I would love to, but I do not have the time.
I'll offer.
Okay.
And I could do it, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
I would like to move on to consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items from the consent calendar with a reminder that you may vote no on any specific item without pulling it for discussion? Would anyone like to pull anything?
Yes, I'm gonna be getting to it first. Number 12.
Number 12, okay.
You gonna object to it?
Never.
Would anybody else like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Then do I have a motion to approve all the consent items with the exception number 12?
Actually, I'd like to pull 13 to make a related comment. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve items one through 11?
It's actually three through 11, just to be
I'm sorry, three through 11.
So move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
The motion passes.
May we have the discussion, please, on item number 12, the acceptance of a donation from the Chinese Club of San Marino?
Certainly. I just wanted to highlight the incredible generosity of the Chinese club. I think that they have continued to support our police and fire to such a degree that it really did require me to call out and thank anybody who might be listening as well as make it official, that their generosity to our city really should be highlighted. They're exemplary groups in supporting our community in many ways. And the generosity, I think, of course, I'm very happy to accept the donation, but I felt that it needed to be highlighted and pointed out to anybody. And if we can and have some way to thank them, whether it's a proclamation perhaps or something to acknowledge this on an annual basis. I know we support them individually as council members, but I really think as a city, we should make a statement because they have continued to amaze me with their generosity and hosting events and doing things and even the financial contributions that help our city really be the best they can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here.
That would be our pleasure.
Do we have a motion regarding item number 12, please?
I move to accept the donation of $20,000 from the Chinese Club of San Marino. Approve the fiscal 2020, 2021 revenue budget adjustment. the fiscal 2020-2021 revenue budget adjustment of $10,000 in the donations fund account 2281-30-3601-000 for our police donations received, and approve the fiscal year 2020-2021 revenue budget amendment of $10,000 in the donations fund account number 281-34-3601-000 for our fire donation received.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 13, approval of contract agreement for the motor officer training. Chief Contra?
No.
Or, no, I have to say, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I don't know if I'm playing with Brown Act on this or not, and if so, if I could just be appropriately directed. I know that there is excitement about the motor officer training and rollout that will be occurring. And I would be delighted if, as alternate liaison to the Public Safety Commission, if that body could be directed through whatever method to prepare for the community, a way to have a program to let them know what this will include, and perhaps even adding something with our new black and whites that are out there, since they have a brand new look. So I'm not sure exactly how to craft that, if someone can assist me.
I would just say thank you very much. We have heard you, and I'll have some conversations with the chief.
Thank you.
Is there a motion or any other discussion regarding item 13? Seeing none? Is there a motion regarding item 13?
I move to approve the contract agreement for motor officer training.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Written communications. Do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution?
We do not have any.
Thank you. Public comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Anyone in the virtual world?
There are no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. Then I will adjourn this meeting to May...
Suggested.
Oh, suggested items. Are there any...
Yes, I have one, and it may have been something we've discussed before, but I haven't seen it come back at all. And that is the application in a, for a vacancy tax. I mean, obviously, we see the problems associated both with us and the schools. So I would like to know whether or not we could bring one back. I know it would have to probably be General Election 2022, a vacancy tax, number one. And also, number two, study whether or not we could share that vacancy tax with the school district.
I agree. That's a great idea. We did discuss it before.
Yeah, we have.
I think Director Savantes has it in his lineup to bring forward, and we could speak to that.
Good. Does anyone else have any items that they would like, including the future agenda? Seeing them, and after an hour and 34 minutes, we will adjourn this meeting to May 28.